Good afternoon and welcome to the thirsty Thursday edition of the rundown. We love to see you all out there in viewer land just enjoying your afternoon with us. My name is Mike Forsky. I'll be your co-host for today. I do not do this program by myself, though.
No, as a matter of fact, you don't. In fact, you're going to be the host today. I am the co-host. You try to take my job, bro?
Well, you know, we actually have this conversation every once in a while. If if we're both co-hosting, doesn't that make us both the co-hosts?
Well, you know, the the idea is one of us is going to be kind of leading and introducing each story. So today, that would be, that would be you. Okay, so you're the one that's actually expected to read. I I just get to talk trash. So by the way, my name is Craig DeLuce coming at you from the left coast out here in California, uh, the the home of the failed recall. Uh, but definitely looking forward to enjoying this thirsty Thursday with you.
Any new directives from the your new tyrannical leader?
Uh, no, not yet, although there's there just there is something very interesting going down. Um, I suppose I could talk about it now. So the Sacramento County Grand Jury the other day sent me a report basically where they're saying that we need to get all of our kids and students who are eligible for vaccines, we need to get them vaccinated. And my first response to my superintendent and our attorney is was who the hell is the Sacramento Grand Jury? What makes them think they can tell me to do anything?
That's right. Yep. I get something for them right here.
Exactly, exactly. So anyway, that's that's some poop that is going to probably hit the fan here in the next, well, sometime in the next six hours. So it'll be fun and interesting. And you know, if I, uh, you know, I didn't say anything because they sent me a thing saying, you can't release this information in advance because we're going to go to jail, you know, citing penal code and all of that. So I didn't, you know, because if if there's anything that I'm not, I'm not someone who wants to spend time in jail. Sorry.
But I love that, though. Here's information we're not supposed to release. So we're putting it in paper and sending it to you and telling you not to release it.
Right.
What? Wait, sorry, what?
When did I agree to this?
That's that's some California nonsense right there. That's crazy.
It is definitely California nonsense. But anyway, so we'll be interested to see I see how the poop hits the fan. But anyway, all that having been said, man, it's it's another typical day in California. Beautiful sun, great weather, crappy politics.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And it's just, and we got, uh, we got hot, 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 hot here, a little bit of rain in the afternoons from the thunderstorms from the heat and then decent politics. So yeah, we'll keep driving on. Well, it's it's a good trade off. You know, we got, uh, we don't have mudslides. You got to do some. So that's.
Well, but see, we all have our motivations. You have the hot weather to to cause you to say, you know, I need some some cool libations. And and for us, I have the, you know, the crappy politics of living in liberal hell to lead you to want a drink. So in that case, we both have a reason to celebrate thirsty Thursday.
Every day is thirsty Thursday. So it's just depends on how thirsty you are, right? That's that's all there is to it. So there you go. Let's uh, let's roll into some stories. I mean, we're talking about some school issues. So let's just jump right into this school board out in, uh, so we're doing Ohio, right? The Ohio School Board. Uh, this is, uh, the school board is in Hudson, Hudson, Ohio. I'm not sure where that is in Ohio, but, um, the mayor there of Hudson. Now, the the mayor's office, the city council and the school board's office and the school board chair are different elected offices. One does not report to the other in any way. Uh, so they are different political bodies. Let's make sure we're clear on that. Well, the school has come started teaching, uh, doing in their English classes in their creative writing classes, uh, or just in their English classes where they have to write. They've they've started teaching out of the manual called 62 Things to Write About. 62 Things to Write About. Now, Craig, while I'm talking about this, if you'll scroll down to what the bottom of that article, there is a list of the things that are in the 62, 642 things. I wanted to go over that list with the with the good folks here that are that are viewing us today.
Come on, it's Kippy.
The, uh, the the mayor there, his name is Craig Schubert. Uh, he got a hold of this list of items that they're supposed to be talking about and was just set aback by, uh, how sexually explicit some of these terms, uh, were and some of the things that they were asking these minors, again, under the age of 18, to be writing about in the school board directed as directed by the school, uh, school board and the school for these students to write about. Now you have, you have, uh, the the mayor who took the list of items to one of the judges there in the town and said, what do you think of these items that, uh, the children are looking at? And before we tell you what the judge said, Craig, show, tell us what's on this list.
All right. So here, here's one. Choose how you will die. Uh, write a scene that begins with, it was the first time I killed a man. Oh, don't worry. I'm getting to the good ones here real quick.
Yeah. Yeah. Some of these are, listen, you can hear some of these are very insightful. Okay.
Right.
You're you're challenging the student. You get that.
Describe your favorite part of a man's body using only verbs.
Approaching the borderline now, approaching the borderline.
Okay. You're a serial killer. What TV, what TV shows are on your DVR list and why? Oh, write a sex scene you wouldn't show your mom. Now rewrite the sex scene from the above into one that you would let your mom read. Uh, you've been caught in bed by a jealous spouse. How will you talk your way out of this? Write a sermon for a beloved preacher who has been caught in a sexual scandal. 10 euphemisms for sex.
Yeah. At this point, the trend starts moving towards sex, sex, sex. It's almost as if the writer, whoever wrote this 642 things started to get a little.
Right. Exactly. The first time you had sex, uh, 10 euphemisms for sex. Uh, oh, write an X-rated Disney scenario.
Yeah. So this, 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 this quickly devolved into, um, the author of the 642 things wanting to hear how people talk about sex. Uh, and maybe this is great if you're in some sort of weird college sexual, uh, you know, investigation class, uh, you know, whatever it happens to be, but not for 13, 14, 15, 16 year olds. This is not what they should be writing about. So Mayor Schubert there took this list to the local judge. And the judge said, if there, if the school board and the school are requiring them to write on these topics, there's enough to charge those adults with introduction to child pornography. Right. Or exposure to child pornography.
As soon as they, as soon as they write some, as soon as they write that stuff, it's now a child is now is now pornography is what the judge was saying.
Yep.
And you know, it it is amazing to me and I've taken, I've taken college level creative writing courses and I've never seen any crap like this. I mean, it, this is, it is playing into the worst that society has to offer. Um, it is the playing to the lowest common denominator. And I am glad to see a mayor standing up to a school board. And what really was frustrating about this whole thing, you know, was basically that the school board is like, eh, you know, they're no real big deal. They're not really concerned or they don't really seem to be, uh, concerned about it. And I honestly, the one thing I honestly hope is that this mayor will actually get his police chief to follow through. And if these things are taught in class that and they, they, once they collect the evidence, uh, that they will then have, uh, have these instructors and have these school board members arrested.
Yeah, the, uh, they, the mayor gave the option to the school board and said, listen, you can, uh, uh, either resign now or or drop this, uh, or be charged criminally. Those are your choices. Resign now or recharge criminally. And the school board made its announcement. They said, well, you know, we're separate than them. We're the school, you know, we're, we can do what we want. And and again, I just like Craig just said to you folks, um, yeah, I hope that he follows through on this and he follows through rather soon. Um, you know, Craig, the the one thing that I did see in all of this and it brought up an argument that you and I put on here before was they had one of the, and it wasn't the police chief. It was another one of the police officers got up during this school board meeting. Uh, because they talked about, oh, the teachers get to explore what they do with the students. Uh, they get to, you know, teach certain methods and the and the cop got up and said, said, listen, you see this right here? This is my camera. All right. This is my police camera. I have to wear this every day, all day long. So everybody can see what I'm doing and make sure I'm talking to people correctly, adults correctly, and and getting through, uh, you know, uh, acceptably within your policies and procedures. He goes, we need a camera in every classroom to make sure our teachers are doing the same and they're doing it with minors. It's a, it's a crime in itself that I have to wear one of these cameras and teachers do not have to have a camera in their classroom. That's what we should be doing here today. And then the crowd went crazy, you know? Because then the teachers, Greg, you've seen this, you're a school board member, the teachers automatically say, well, oh, but then I won't be able to teach the methods that I want to. And well, yeah, you won't be able to put out your propaganda, you know, for repeating, teaching your point of view rather than what the curriculum is.
Well, I I I'm of the mind that, first of all, if we need to be careful because we want to make sure that, uh, because eventually we may wind up in a situation where everybody's going to have a camera, uh, in their, in their place of business or where they are working, uh, so that anyone, so that so that they can be monitored. And if you're okay with that, if everyone's okay with that, if we're all going to sign up for that, okay, then let's all do that.
Well, I'm talking to public school, talking about in a public school.
Oh, yeah. Well, then people are just gonna, why just a public school? Why not a private school?
Well, you can have it in a private school if you want. The private school agrees to that. But in a public school, that's something the school board and the people should be able to vote and decide on.
I just, I guess my issue is, once again, serving as a school board member would be one more thing for parents to ignore. Because because here's the thing, man. Ultimately, uh, you know, for me and my kids, when my kids went through school, I knew all their teachers. I knew what they were learning in class at any given time. We had these sorts of conversations and the problem is too many parents just drop their kids off at school thinking, okay, I'm gonna, you know, the school is responsible. But that's not the truth, folks. If you're not, if you believe that the teacher at school has more influence over your children than you do, that that they have a greater influence in terms of implementing, uh, morals and values and understanding. If your teach kid's teacher has more influence than you do, then you have a problem. You need to be take playing a greater role in your children's education. I'm just, I'm just gonna say that. Um, usually what happens is, and I said this before, people show up at school board meetings when their child is being honored sometimes. Or when the school district has done something that's pissed them off. Those are the two times that people show up. And and I'm telling you right now, you look, you look at back to school night, same exact thing. The fact is, parents in general need to be more involved and engage in their children's education. Then things like this don't sneak up on, don't sneak up on them. Don't sneak up on us when they're actually more engaged and involved. Try showing up to school board meetings. Or at least you can watch them online now. Uh, but try being at an active and engaged parent. Because having a camera does absolutely no good unless unless you're going to do that. Once again, it's just one more thing for, uh, for unengaged parents to ignore.
Sure, I agreed to, you know, for the most part, but if you have, you and your your spouse are are working full time, working diligently, there's overtime, and I'm not saying you're ignoring what your, what your student is doing or what's what's going on at their school, but perhaps having that camera there, monitoring a public official teaching in a public school makes it a little bit easier for you as the parent to check in on the learning process. And I'm not saying they all have to do it and everybody, everybody should. And I know this is going to bring up questions of, oh, for 10 minutes, nobody did anything. I'm paying for your salary, blah, blah, blah.
I will tell you, I will tell you though, this, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'll tell you one thing. And this is now that I'm I'm kind of rethinking this because one of the things that 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 body cams have shown us, it's really helped protect a number of police officers who actually did the right thing.
Right.
And and the camera caught it. Because I'm gonna tell you right now, some of you are going to learn that your child is no angel. You're going to learn that your child is not the engaged, loving student that you think they are. Uh, I mean, it's good reveal for some parents, uh, that the problem is not the teacher, but the problem, and I'm not saying, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying the teachers are never the problem. I'm not saying the public schools are never the problem. I'm saying that, uh, it's not always the problem.
No, and I hear you and I agree completely. That's that's one of the, what's gonna happen there, one of the peripherals. But I also want to know if this teacher's, you know, teaching critical race theory against what the school board is said to do because she's in class and has convinced the class it's a good thing, you know? I want to know that what's going on inside the classroom as far as what the topic is being taught.
I I my, my, my mind has been, my mind has been changed on it. Go for it. Like I said, I, I think it probably it's been changed for a different reason. Uh, one, I do want that revealed, but number two, I think it'll also help parents better understand their kids.
Agreed. Absolutely agreed. Absolutely agreed. All right. So let's make that happen at our next school board meeting. We we've decided on it. Okay. Uh, all right, let's, uh, let's move on to the next one. Always a, always a favorite topic is talking about the, the ATF, the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms and Explosives, uh, or shortened down ATF. And it's kind of funny because we only picked out like the the middle acronym part. We don't, we dropped the B and the E at the end. I don't, I don't know why we had to do that. But, uh, anyway, we have the ATF. ATF is in, uh, out of Minneapolis, St. Paul, their office up there. Uh, they said they've had a rise in gun violence, gun violence, right? Because the guns are violent. It's not people being violent with firearms. It's gun violence. Uh, and they say that this is happening because there has been, uh, the addition of machine guns into the realm of gun violence in the Minneapolis-St. Paul area. Now, as they go through this story, Craig, and we hear from Assistant Special Agent in Charge Jeff Reed out of the St. Paul office, they talk about.
You mean ass special agent?
It's ASAC, ASAC.
He's dad.
SAC. He's.
He's an ass special.
The Assistant Special Agent Charge, ASAC Jeff Reed there, St. Paul office, has said, has made comments and to the effects of, well, we hear rapid fire guns, so we know they're machine guns. Uh, like, and that caught my attention, like, okay, now we have the, the Assistant Special Agent in Charge of a region for the ATF who cannot tell me what the definition of a machine gun is. Uh, and this is, we're seeing a problem in the industry. Now, he did go on to state that they have found certain seers, machine gun seers. And for anybody that's ever watched a movie and they said, well, we just dropped the sear in. Uh, it takes, you know, 30 to 30 to 60 seconds. It's just not how it works, not nothing whatsoever. Uh, now you can get certain binary trigger systems that can, you know, force the reset on an M4 or excuse me, on an AR-15, uh, so it can fire a little bit quicker, uh, on the reset. But a machine gun has never been defined by how fast the gun shoots. It's what makes the gun shoot fast that is the issue. Make sure you understand that. It's not how fast the gun shoots. It's what makes the gun shoot fast. If it's your finger that makes the gun shoot fast because you're really fast on your, on your finger, that does not make the gun or your finger a machine gun. Uh, these people could have taken a, Craig, a slide fire stock, one of the bump stocks. Now currently, uh, still illegal in St. Paul, Minnesota, uh, area or Minneapolis area in Minnesota because of President Trump's executive order. Uh, several other states that we do, the military has had a, uh, overturn on this. We've had the Sixth Circuit, Sixth District, uh, that's had the overturn on this and we're so that's still, still a fight going on. But and and the issue there is that bump stock does not make it a machine gun. So bump stocks are outlawed, not because they became machine guns, right? Just because they made it fire fast. And that's, that's one of those issues here. This might be something like that. Now there is, and and I don't recommend anybody doing this because the ATF is watching you. Uh, if you go on like the Chinese, you know, eBay, what is it? The wish.com? You can order a sear part for for Glocks. Uh, now it does take much more than 60 seconds to put it in. That's, that's a load of crap that the ATF has put out. And by the way, the ATF in this story said, uh, that we're going to give you a video. Here it is. And there's no video in the, in the story. Nobody, nobody has this video. Nobody's seen this video. Another great ATF technique, by the way. We have the video. Can we see the video? Uh, we can't find it right now. It's just, I've, well, have you seen the video? Well, I've never actually seen the video. Oh, okay. Great. Yeah, we believe you now. We really do. Uh, so the ATF has said that those parts are showing up. From what I know, from what I've seen, and I've seen those parts before. They're cheap Chinese parts. And when you go to pull the trigger on them the first time, they're going to fail and break on you and probably hurt yourself. Okay. So I I believe this is a lot more of the ATF jumping on board now. The whole anti firearm, anti machine gun stance that this administration is giving them. They cannot even tell me their Assistant Special Agent Charge of an entire major metropolitan area cannot even define what a machine gun is. ATF, it's time for you people to start obeying the law and what the US Code says and what the federal laws are that you enforce rather than making crap up like you always do and going out there and trying to enforce things that are not even laws. That's your reinterpretation of something because you don't understand it or you don't like it. Well, guess what? There's judges in place now that are going to hold you accountable for that.
Well, you know, Mike, the thing is, is that once again, you you have a lot of these various government agencies. It's not just the ATF, the California Bureau of Firearms or or A or or Departments of Justice all across the country in some of these blue leaning states or anti-gun states. Uh, first of all, hire people who are higher ups, who are making and setting policy, who number one, don't really know or understand firearms or firearms technology. Uh, it's the reason why they have to redefine stuff because, uh, the people who once again wrote the anti-gun laws don't understand firearms and don't understand firearms technology. I really don't understand how the law intersects with the technology. And so they just have to make it up as they go along. And it's kind of this, which is an attitude that some in the the up upper echelons of law enforcement can get this. It's, you know, because I said so mentality. And not, not all people, not all, you know, not all people high up in law enforcement do this, but many do. And what they don't understand is that's not your job. Your job is to enforce the law. Enforce what is the law, not to decide what the law should be. And that's what you have examples of doing in the ATF. And the problem is you have the anti-gun media playing right into it because they don't understand, uh, you know, you've got some 20 something straight out of college who doesn't know his butt from a hole in the ground. Uh, and and he's trying, he or she is trying, uh, to write a, uh, to do a story on an item. And all they know is gun violence and guns are bad. And so they just fall right into the the exact same, allowing the exact same propaganda to go forward. And that's basically what you got here.
Yeah, absolutely right. And listen, you, you talked about this yesterday as well with the, the Federal Department of Justice not agreeing with the Supreme Court's decision on abortion out of Texas abortion law. So they're going to go judge shopping down there. Hey, that's your job. Go, go be part of the executive branch and and do your executive branch job, right? The the Supreme Court is already made a decision. It's time for you to go back to work doing something else, you know?
Yes. Something you actually got hired to do.
Yeah, yeah.
Just saying.
All right, uh, let's move right along here. Let's go out to Oregon and talk to you about this, uh, this teacher out in Oregon. Now, this one is, Greg, I'm not sure how long we're going to spend on this one. I wanted to bring this up because this teacher, Gail Groby, Gail Groby, and if you're out there in Oregon and Newburgh High School, I hope you're, uh, I hope there's people paying attention. I hope parents are paying attention. I hope school board members are paying attention. Uh, Craig, the school board came down with a ruling recently that said there will be no political advertising, no political propaganda, no political leanings whatsoever in the classrooms. By that, they meant there'll be no BLM flags, there'll be no pride flags, that there will just be, here you go, information for students and curriculum to learn. That's it. We're going to teach you facts, reading, writing, arithmetic, right? That's, that's what we're going to teach you. So this teacher took exception to that. And Craig, I'm gonna give you the big one, rather than, so so like, I'm sorry, they take the BL, they say no BLM flags, no pride flags, nothing like that. This teacher has a unique response to that.
Right. She decides to pull down the American flag, saying it's, uh, an example of or to represent, uh, violence and intolerance. And you know, the interesting thing about it is, um, it's the American flag. First of all, it's our flag and it's a part of our history. So therefore, yeah, no, needs to be up. Uh, and the probably the the flag for the state of Oregon, uh, needs to be up in that particular, in that particular class. Um, or in the, in those, in those schools. Uh, but to have that, if you had that sort of an attitude, then you have no, you really should not be teaching our children. I'm sorry, but you shouldn't. If you hate this country so much, then maybe we need to find a way to, uh, arrange for you to go to a country that, uh, you find more preferable.
You know, Craig, we used to talk and we used to hear people say stuff like, uh, if you don't like it here, you can go somewhere else. Uh, and we all sat around and said, all right, well, that's not realistic and probably a little, uh.
Yeah, no, you're right.
Um, but not, not so much anymore. Now I'm like, oh, okay, go. You just go. If you, if you really want to do things like take down the American flag, uh, because you don't believe in the American way, then, uh, you know, go teach in, I don't know, in Canada or, you know, Guadalajara. I don't care.
Well, especially when, especially when, okay, first of all, you're putting up these flags that represent things that first of all, have never been or been successful anywhere, right? First of all, if you're putting up the BLM flag, uh, or the Antifa flag, let's just be real. These are anarchist Marxist groups that believe in just destroying and taking down America and implementing a Marxist socialist vision that has never worked anywhere in the world. Right? But you have this utopia and you think that you're so smart, you can make it work. Well, a lot of people, a lot smarter than you have tried and failed. So yeah, let's not destroy the best thing that this, that this world has seen. The best nation and society that this world has seen. The very fact that you feel like you can have, that you can do that sort of madness and not wind up in prison, um, ought to tell you how good things are here.
What's the quote? Uh, democracy is not the, the best form of government, but but it is the best one we have?
Yeah, it's like, uh, it's the worst form of government ever, uh, accepting all others.
So Gail, you gotta go. Hope you're fired today, today.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, getting rid of teachers is not that easy. Um, but at the very least, I hope there's some sort of, some sort of discipline and that she is put on a, uh, you know, run out of rail, you know, track, run out of town on a rail sort of track.
They need her to go count library books over and over and over again. They should keep her job counting library books. Uh, by the way, Newburgh High School suburb just southwest of Portland in, uh, in Oregon there. So if anybody wants to go by and wave a hi. Uh, all right, let's, uh, let's, let's move, you listen, notice I didn't say insurrection. I didn't say, uh, you know, storm in the building. I said, just go over there and make your voices heard. That's the same thing the boss man said back on January. Uh, all right, let's, let's talk about this, Craig. This one.
You're inciting violence, making your voice heard.
Yeah, yeah. Make your voice heard. Go over there and make your voice heard. It's exactly what the president said. Don't believe me, go listen to the whole tape. Don't read a transcript, go listen to it, listen to it yourself. He said, go over to that building and make your voice heard. That's what he said.
I I know, I know that this is a little off topic, but I literally had an argument with somebody who said, I listened to. I was like, no, you didn't. I said, exactly what words did he say that incited riot? That should have incited a riot. You, you, please pull, pull the segment up. I pulled up the entire video. Please show me the segment.
Yeah.
I know what I heard. I'm like, no.
Not sure. You know what you're, you know what you got told you heard is that was it? You got told, the news media told you, you heard it. So now you believe you heard it. Uh, Deadspin, Deadspin article. Listen, uh, the the Deadspin is, uh, is, is, I don't know if you've ever read. Can you read Deadspin? Deadspin is one of those ones I go to find out what they're teaching, you know, uh, that's wrong. You know, what, what stories they're releasing that that are wrong and biased.
Yeah. Yeah. I honestly, unless I come across stories like this, Deadspin's not on my, not on my list of, not on my reading list.
No. Deadspin magazine there or Deadspin online magazine, whatever it is, their, their reporter's name. I'm just throwing everybody under the bus this week or today. Today's Under the Bus Thursday is what I'm going to start calling it. Uh, Jesse Spector, uh, Jesse Spector, don't know if that's a guy, Jesse, girl, Jesse, I have no idea. Uh, Jesse Spector decides Mike Piazza has to go. Now, listen, for those that are not, uh, in the baseball, in the baseball, no. Uh, Mike Piazza is in the, is in the Baseball Hall of Fame. Uh, he wears a New York Mets hat. He's one of the greatest catchers that, uh, ever lived. And and the Baseball Hall of Fame is a big deal. There's less than 250 people in the Baseball Hall of Fame for over, uh, you know, 100, almost 150 years now of recognized baseball. Uh, you know, and you get maybe one a year in the Hall of Fame at at the most. So it's not like we, it's, it's not like any other sport where they're like, oh, you, you made it five years. Here you go. Here's your, here's your Hall of Fame plaque. Baseball's a huge deal. At, anyway, Mike is a great player, was a great player for a couple of different cities. Uh, you know, the, the two predominant ones being Los Angeles and New York City. Now, he is a Trump supporter. You know, he was seen at a rally, you know, he was shown at a rally back in October, uh, you know, prior to the election. And he's now come out for other candidates, including Craig Larry Elder out there in California. Uh, he has gotten up and he has said, listen, I'm Mike Piazza, I support this guy. This guy does this, will do that. And he's done what, you know, people that, uh, of that, that have some sort of, you know, public persona, you know, whether it be a sports celebrity or a, you know, entertainment celebrity. And he's got up there and did that very nicely. Did not, nowhere has he got up and talked about the other party is horrible, they're crap. It's just been support for his candidate, straight. I am this person. I support this candidate. Yet that's too much for Deadspin, Craig. Deadspin says, now we have to erase Mike Piazza from all history because he supports the right.
Well, you know, what's funny is, is that they, you know, uh, they, they deadpan and they get mad at him because he's like, oh, well, he's pointing out that, you know, people are leaving California. And even though, you know, California's population went up, well, in terms of people moving to and from California or people being born in California, no, actually, our population went down. Uh, now, overall, it went up because, uh, well, we have people who are illegally coming across our border.
Hello, border issue going on.
Right. So, so technically, they are correct in that the population did go up. But that's because we have people who are coming to the country. Right. So, so, uh, technically they are correct in that the population did go up, but that's because we have people who are coming to the country illegally. Now, I, the funny part about this whole thing is, once again, is they're all for people speaking their truth unless that truth is non-conformist. And that's the problem with Deadspin is it, you know, it says, it's not, it's not brave to stand up and preach the popular stuff that all the popular people are saying. That's not bravery. There's nothing brave about saying, I agree with everybody. There's no, no bravery there, but someone's willing to stand up and say, look, you know, we need to elect somebody to office. And by the way, for those of you who don't believe, take some time and read about Gavin Newsom and all the stuff, all the mistakes that he is making since he got elected governor. I mean, California has the highest poverty rate of any state in the country. We have the highest homeless rate of any state in the country. When you take a look at the implementation during COVID, the implementation of our unemployment, dude, $2 billion in fraud in less than a year, 2 billion, half a billion of that went to criminals. Went to criminals who were in jail in California, applying for unemployment. The only thing that could have been, the only thing that could have been stupider is if those criminals who are applying for unemployment in California were applying from facilities outside of California. Wildfires, dude, we, we have wildfires every year and he closed down eight wildfire camps. And it wasn't because of budget, because we, we had a budget surplus.
Yeah.
Why? Because the rich in California are making so much money. They're the investment class, the people who invested in Walmart.
It's the richest fault. Here we go again. It's the richest fault.
Right. Well, and I'm not blaming, there's my, my point is, is that the average Californian is, 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 is having a challenge here. But it's largely because of the policies that the Democrats have put in place.
Right. It's, it's, yeah, it's, it's hypocritical. Obviously we know that, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's hard to believe that we could say that the acceptable method, again, because we have somebody who's, who is stumping for the right out there and that we don't agree with them, so they must go. They must be erased from history. It's not, don't go watch Mike Piazza play baseball now. It's, we must ban all of baseball and erase his records to take him out of the hall of fame. Because he has the, 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 the American right to make the decision of who he wants to or not wants to, or sit at home and do nothing. Right. You know, we've seen this happen with, with, uh, every time we get a, a conservative entertainment sports star that speaks up, the, the left's answer is always to, uh, remove them from existence.
Right. Well, because obviously they're, they're, you know, they're evil, right?
Well, they, yeah, they must be stopped. They are evil.
They must be stopped.
Must be stopped. All right. Well, Craig, this, uh, this will take us into our, our, our parting shot here. There is, uh, there's a former Republican state senator in Pennsylvania. His name's Scott Wagner. He was, uh, uh, I think it was 2014, 2018. He was a state senator there. Still big, active in the community, uh, active, uh, you know, conservative man. And, uh, he's got a couple of extra bucks and he decided he wanted his, uh, his message to be known, uh, about the, about the handling, the president's handling of what's gone overseas and, uh, gone on overseas in Afghanistan.
Oh yeah. And, uh, as you like to note, uh, Joe Biden is making the Taliban great again.
Yeah. So these are, I think he's got five of these up over two month period over there in, uh, in his portion of Pennsylvania and, uh, uh, listen, apparently being received rather well. And by those that are not being received, they're pulling their hair out and, and saying, you can't do that. You can't, it's hurtful speech. No, no, it's not. No, it's not. It's not at all. Go sit down. Perhaps you should go tear a flag down in Oregon. Maybe you could do that if you wanted to.
There you go. Look, hey, hate speech is not, yeah, hate speech. There's a difference between hate speech and speech that you hate.
That's right.
Of course I happen to love that speech.
That's right. That's, that's right. So that's what we got going on for you today, folks. We're, uh, we are very happy that you joined us and, uh, Craig's going to tell you all the right places to be watching us.
Exactly. Folks, you want to make sure you check us out. Uh, you, obviously if you're watching this now, you know where to find us. Uh, that's two A news that you can find us on Arms Room Radio. You can find us on, uh, California Republican Assembly, uh, one of our great sponsors. Uh, you can find us just about anywhere. And, uh, but, uh, if you want to participate in our freed back Friday, you got to make sure you check us out at the rundown. That's the rundown.us will take you to our YouTube channel. Still working on the website. Uh, but also you can find us at two A news rundown, or if you just put in the rundown in Facebook, you can find us there as well. Uh, Mikey, do me a quick favor and let the folks know about our other sponsors.
Uh, we have, uh, we have our good friends at Grid Defense and Gorilla Machining, Grid Defense and Gorilla Machining. And, uh, this is what we have for you tomorrow on Freed Back Friday. We have ourself a bolt carrier group. Uh, this is the portion that makes the gun go pew, 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 pew. So this is a great little item here that, uh, you will get based on your involvement tomorrow with us live here on Freed Back Friday.
Exactly. So that, that's, that's the, uh, the pew pew device. The pew pew mechanism is what we will officially call it.
That's it. The pew pew mech. There we go. Just like that.
Pew mech. See? That, that way the algorithms don't get us.
Oh yeah.
Although when they start adding pew pew, uh, we're going to be, when they start adding that to the algorithm, we're going to have to change that.
We're done. Yeah.
All right, folks. Well, hey, that's going to be it for today's episode of the rundown. We very much appreciate you tuning in. We appreciate you liking and sharing and telling your friends. This is the place to talk about two A news and conservative views. We'll holler at you tomorrow.
Bye bye.